I didn't log into Zoom yet. Is Vice Mayor Kameh on on Zoom? Okay, all right, then we will start and we will start with roll call.
Jimenez.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Kameh.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Cohen.
Here, and we called the meeting to order at 2:00. Let's start with the first item, which is the upcoming agenda for next week, December 12. We have a 9:30 closed session, 1:30 regular session, and we do have an evening session. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So consent starts on page six. Continues on pages seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
They had a meeting in there earlier today.
And 12.
It's different. It's different.
And then for Section 3 Strategic Support. We have building permitting for residential additions, 3.3. We have two items to be heard with other items, 3.3, well, 3.4 being heard with 3.5 and 9.1. We have an annual debt report, 3.6, municipal code for proposed responsible construction ordinance, 3.7, retirement board status, 3.8, foreign influence and city elections, 3.9, and council appointee merit increases, 3.10. And skipping ahead to Section 8, community and economic development, Ruff Ferrari emergency interim housing expansion, and the Berry Estes supportive parking project, which is 8.2. 9.1 to be heard with 3.4 and 3.5, a redevelopment successor agency. And land use, we have land use consent. Items A, B, and C, and then regular 2 and regular land use consent items 10.2 and 10.3. There is an ad sheet, so the maker of the motion should include that, and we'll go to public comment.
Josephina.
Yes, I need to log in as interpreter.
This is this is comment on the agenda for December 12. Do you have comment on next week's agenda? Okay, let's see if there's any other public comment. Any other public comment?
Call in user one.
Yes, hi, thank you. Martha O'Connell, Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. Yes, indeed. Chair Cohen, there is an evening session, and you were kind enough last week to give us a time certain at 6:00 on the mobile home park designation. I just want to share with you, give you guys a heads up. I've gotten some emails from seniors. They're very confused. They don't understand the technical language. They they're frightened. They think rezoning means something bad. And I'm trying to explain to them that this is something to help the parks, to give an added layer of protection. I know at one of the meetings, a lady got up and testified, and she was frightened, and she thought this was going to close the park. So please be kind and patient next week if we have people calling in, and they are confused because this is very technical, and all they want is that extra layer of protection, but they may use the wrong terminology. So thank you very much.
Back to the committee.
Okay, any comments or motion?
I move approval of the agenda for December 12, including the ad sheet.
I'll second that, and I think we don't need 2.4B because we don't have a rules meeting next week.
Okay, then let's remove that.
So we'll remove item 2.4B and include the remaining items on the ad sheet. You have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll.
Just one thing I'd like to add is regarding the consent items 10.1, A, B, and C, that we will be hearing those time certain at 6:00 per the request of several community members, and I'm glad we were able to accommodate that in our agenda for next week.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. The roll call, but I think Vice Mayor Kameh is noticed for that location, or do we just she have to make sure she's alone in the room?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so she's okay.
Okay, I didn't see that, sorry. Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Kameh.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you.
All right, we have no meeting on December 19, so we'll move on to our consent calendar. Let's start with public comment on the consent calendar.
Can we pull?
Oh, you want, does anything, anybody want to pull anything from consent?
Yeah, I wanted to pull the the auditor's monthly activities report.
Okay, so we're pulling, that's item four. Should we start? We'll start with item four. Go ahead and start, and then we'll take public comment on item four.
Thanks. Joe, do you want to come down? When we had asked for the animal care services audit, we had talked about coming back here and talking about priorities. So I just wanted to see what you what you've got on there in terms of your priorities for what hasn't been started.
So Juror City Auditor, so the projects currently underway include our annual report on city services, which we'll be publishing before the before the holiday break, and the non-managed employee performance appraisal audit, which we'll be finishing up getting a next year, as well as the language accessibility audit, which is on a similar timeframe. We'll be kicking off the animal care and services audit sometime in the next few weeks. I'll send out a job start letter to each of you. And the next ones coming up, they're kind of in the order of solicited in the monthly activity report, which is the access to and use of critical services by traditionally marginalized communities. That was a direction that came to explore audit of that nature from the March budget message, the mayor's March budget message. And the one next after that would be the tenant protection orders, ordinance, looking at the review of the assessment use of TPO fees, which was a request from a council member as well. So those are the next two coming up that we'd be starting probably first quarter of '24.
So will the San Jose Animal Care and Services audit, will that be available before March? Do you know how long that's going to take?
That's going to be a long project. I don't foresee us finishing that before fall of next year because it's a pretty extensive.
Okay.
And I have to put a big team on it. It's still pretty extensive.
Okay, and then for that one, will you come to, will you come to NSE before you go to council with that one?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay, great. Thanks. I was just looking at the other items. So you're going to start the critical services, and that will be ready before March?
No, we'd be starting.
Oh, you'll be starting before March.
So those are when we'd be starting, yeah.
Okay, so that won't be done before the budget?
No, it wouldn't be done that. So typically, we only, we have staff to basically run three to four projects, depending on the size, at any given time.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll move approval of that item.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any public comment on just consent item four?
No hands are raised. And to your point about Vice Mayor Kameh's participation today, Vice Mayor Kameh, would you please raise your hand if there are any members of the public that wish to provide comment at your location?
At this time, there are no members of the public who have raised their hand or said that they want to speak.
Okay, perfect. If that changes, just raise your hand on Zoom, and we'll hear from you. But no members of the public wish to speak for this item.
Thank you. Let's move to a vote then on this item.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Kameh.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to the rest of the consent calendar. There are four other items, and we'll start with public comment on those four items. Looks like there's no public comment.
No hands are raised.
You have a motion on the consent calendar?
Move approval of consent.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Kameh.
Yes, and there is no one here who wants to speak.
Thank you. Foley.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to our memos, starting with memo C1, prohibiting unlawful possession of catalytic converters in San Jose. Was there somebody from the mayor's office that was going to comment on this? So I guess that one of us, do you want to introduce it? Okay, we'll introduce it. I think, I think it's a pretty straightforward ordinance change in order to make sure that if people are caught with unlawfully possessing catalytic converters, that that is a violation of our criminal code, and we can prosecute them. I think that's about it. We'll allow members of the public to comment if there are any public comments.
No hands are raised.
Okay.
And there are no members of the public here who want to speak.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Lee, do you want to just mention, review the early consideration form?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager, want to thank the council members and the mayor for their collaboration with city staff on this proposal. Staff is starting to work on this. They were already starting to work as part of a previous work plan, so it is a green light.
Great. Any discussion from members of the committee? All right, a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
All right, then we'll just move to a vote on this item.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Kameh.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Great, thank you. Now we're on to the second item, C2. Vice Mayor Kameh, you want to introduce it?
Yes, thank you so much. And I know that many of you are already aware of how during the COVID environment, many, especially moms, ended up having to stay home, or dads who didn't have anyone to take care of their kids had to make arrangements to be able to either work from home or stay home, or, as you know, childcare is a tremendous, tremendous impediment to many who want to go back to the workforce. I know that we're trying to ease our way back, but, you know, having very, very quality childcare as well as the expense, as a mother and a grandmother, I know very well how there are many obstacles in the way. And so I'd like to have the council consider adopting this commitment to affordable childcare. We are doing our part as a city in terms of the different programs at the libraries, as well as PRNS does in the community to help. And I have discussed this with the administration, as well as with many of those in the library and PRNS, and we hope that you're able to consider this and and move it so that the council can demonstrate its commitment.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Let's go to C2's public comment first, and then we'll take questions from the committee.
No hands are raised.
Okay, back to the committee.
And I don't have anybody here who wants to speak either.
Okay, back to the committee. Anybody?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Foley.
Vice Mayor Kameh, thank you for introducing this, but I have a question for you. So next week, we're going to be just voting on considering a resolution, but we're not, will the resolution be coming for us next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, attached, attached to the memorandum should have been the resolution, the draft resolution. And I actually have worked with with staff and, you know, the administration to incorporate some of the things that we're already doing, so it isn't going to be anything new, but really just highlighting that that this is important and that we should keep it sort of center of mind. So the resolution is attached. It's a draft resolution.
Okay, thank you. But no monetary consideration is included at this time? It's just a?
Correct.
Commitment.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if the if the council will want to do anything, it would have to go through the regular, you know, budget process and everything. So this is just a commitment saying affordable childcare is important.
Okay, thank you.
A sentiment that I think we all support. So thank you so much for bringing this forward, Vice Mayor. Okay, did we have a motion already? I assume Councilmember, Vice Mayor Kameh, you want to move your memo?
Yes, I'd like to move my memo.
Second.
Second.
All right, have a couple of seconds. That brings us to a vote. Let's take the vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Kameh.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Brings us on to open forum. Do we have any speakers for open forum?
We have six cards at the mo. And no one has raised their hand on Zoom yet, so I'll invite the first three people that I have cards for down to line up by the podium, please. We have Celeste, Lord, and Daisy. If you would please introduce yourself once you reach the podium.
Come on in.
Moment. Just, just for the chair, I just, I suspect we may need a translator. And so I don't know, I think we probably have translators here, just to be on standby, because I suspect that's going to be needed. Okay, sweet.
Hi, hello. My name is Celeste Perez. And I'm working on a brewery here in San Jose. And I'm here because the fast food workers in San Jose need your help. Desperately, we need you help, really. And they can be helpful. You help us a lot. Every day, we are forced to take abuse for clients, customers, and whatever the verbal abuse, physically and emotionally. Sometimes even it's not clients, they're our customers. And aggressively, people look in and take advantage of us, workers like us, like me and everybody else. They go on a fast attack with our life. They're threatening us. And when they try to express our concerns to employees, they tell us customers is always right. They have the reason. And they violently react to us like a customer, like employees. And it's not true. They don't have the right to treat us like they do. It's the poorest excuse to take action to protect our workers, like humans beings we are. We need our city to hold employees according to the right to take, to take the right. Like with networkers, we know the right, the right thing, like training us right like supposed to do. And so we can defend ourselves to abuse the clients and employers, providing training, got to protect us from annoying people and violence in our store. Giant corporation in our industry have the profits over our life for so many long. And we want to stop it right now. If you can help us, they can help us a lot. In San Jose, the city council, they have the ability to change that. If you can help us, it can be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Daisy Yomara Gómez Pérez. Good afternoon. My name is Daisy Yomara Gómez Pérez. Trabajo en la industria de comida rápida en Carlos Jr., San Jose, California. I work in fast food industry in Carlos Jr., San Jose, California. Uno de los mayores problemas que enfrentamos es la falta de inseguridad en la comida rápida. One of the problems we face is the lack of safety in the fast food industry. Recientemente, mi tienda nos quedamos sin luz. Recientemente, en la tienda nos quedamos sin luz. Recently, in the store, we end up without the energy. Without power. Lo único que teníamos eran un par de linternas de nuestros celulares como fuente de luz para cocinar. The only, the only light we have, source of light we have was our cell phones, the the light from our cell phones in order to cook. Era sumamente peligroso para nosotros. Alguien podría haberse lastimado gravemente. It was extremely dangerous for us. One of us could have ended up, could have ended up really, really injured. Yo estaba trabajando en el try-through y no me sentía segura. I was working there, and I didn't feel safe. No tenemos guardia de seguridad aún con mucha ocurrencia de violencia en nuestra tienda. We don't have security guard, even though there is a lot of violence around the store. Incluso de haber expresado nuestra preocupación a un gerente. Even though we have expressed our concerns to one of the managers. Nos dijo que teníamos que seguir trabajando bajo esas condiciones. He told us we needed to continue working under those circumstances. No había excusa para poder mandarnos a nuestra casa. There was no excuse to send us back home. Ellos tenían la responsabilidad y la obligación de poder enviarnos a casa. They had the responsibility and the duty, and the duty to send us back home. Este solo es un ejemplo de las inseguridades. This is just one, one example of the lack of safety. Que vivimos todos los trabajadores y afrontamos el día a día. That the workers face day to day. Como comida rápida en nuestra industria. As a fast food industry. Necesitamos que los líderes de la ciudad. We need for city leaders. Se unan los trabajadores para garantizar que nuestra seguridad sea la prioridad dentro de la comida industria. To join or, to join the workers so that the priority could be the safety of our workers. ¿Y cómo podemos lograr esto con entrenamientos? How can we achieve this through training? Con capacitaciones. With workshops. Para estas situaciones, así como velar por nuestros derechos también. For situations like this, and as well, so that we learn about our rights as. También saber de cómo podemos defendernos. We also need to know how to defend ourselves. Nuestra seguridad. Our safety. Sin temor de represalias. Without being afraid of retaliation. Unirnos entonces como trabajadores de comida rápida. We need to unionize the fast food workers.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Just a reminder that speakers requiring a translator will be given double the amount of time as it's listed on the agenda. So before we have our final person in the first group of three, I'll call down three more people to line up, please. Jeffrey Buchanan, Lucia Ortiz, and Ramses. And then we still had Lord Farfon called.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Laurez Farfan. Good afternoon. My name is Laurez Farfan. Trabajo en la comida rápida, Jack in the Box. And I work in fast food restaurant, Jack in the Box. Después del día de acción de gracias, me suspendieron. After Thanksgiving, I got, I got suspended. Porque llamé que estaba enferma. Because I called in sick. Pero conozco mis derechos. But I know my rights. Y tengo derecho a utilizar mi tiempo de enfermedad cuando estoy enferma. And I know that I have the right to use my illness time for when I am sick. También sé que es regla de la empresa no presentarse a trabajar si si sufre de síntomas de enfermedad estomacal, lo cual yo tenía esos síntomas. And I also know that it is a policy in the company that we should not come to work whenever we have stomach issues. And that was exactly my problem. Así que me quedé en shock. Pero también dispuesta a actuar y defenderme. So I was shocked because of that, but I, but I also was willing and able to defend myself.
So I was shocked because of that, but I, but I also was willing and able to defend myself.
Este fue un buen final para mi historia.
This was a good ending for my story.
Pero sigo hablando porque sé que esto no es el final para nuestros trabajadores de comida rápida en San Jose.
But I continue talking because I know that this is not the end, not the result that all of workers have in San Jose.
Muchos empleadores se aprovechan de los trabajadores que desconocen sus derechos.
A lot of employers take advantage of the workers that do not know the rights.
Esto es una crisis.
This is a crisis.
Equipar a los trabajadores con entrenamiento para conocer nuestros derechos.
We need to equip our workers with the knowledge about our rights.
Les ayudaría a conocer los abusos y defender sus derechos.
That way, they will recognize the abuses and they will be able to defend the rights.
Trabajamos duro.
We work very hard.
Para sostener a nuestras familias.
To, to sustain our families.
Comunidades merecemos ser protegidos.
Our community deserves to be protected.
Y nuestros derechos respetados.
And our rights should be respected.
Este mismo día de acción de gracias cuando fuimos a hacer el acto a mi trabajo, el manager me habló.
The same day of Thanksgiving when we went to do, um,
como acción.
We, we went to celebrate Thanksgiving at work. The manager talked to me.
Me dijo que qué estábamos haciendo, porque estábamos haciendo esa acción. Yo le dije por qué estaba haciendo esa acción, porque había, me habían suspendido injustificadamente, por tiempo indefinido.
I'm sorry, I have to correct myself. So they took, they took action because of the situation that happened. So I told him that we had to do that because I got suspended unjustified.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. That's, that's time on that. Thank you so much.
Chairman and members of the committee, Jeffrey Buchanan, on behalf of Working Partnerships USA. Just wanted to join here in solidarity with a few dozen workers who've taken time out of their day to share a little bit of their story and concerns, and to thank members of this committee who've, you know, taken the time to, to talk with workers and to think about, you know, what are the solutions that we can put forward. Certainly Chair Cohen and Councilmember Kame, you know, appreciate the engagement to date. When we think about the city's top priorities, homelessness, public safety, I think you've heard from these workers today, there's an enormous public safety issue here within our fast food sector, you know, impacting some 13,500 workers. When we think about the economic insecurity of that workforce, of that 13,500 workers, you know, we know that workers, current and former workers within the fast food sector make up a disproportionate number of our homeless population. So when we think about some of the ideas put forward here by the workers today, and, you know, in recent weeks and months, looking at, you know, know your rights training so that we can address the pandemic of wage theft that we see within the sector, where 85% of fast food workers are experiencing wage theft. Where we can look at, how do we address the issue of knowing when you're gonna be scheduled to work, to be able to figure out how do you do, you know, multiple jobs? How do you look at doing training while you're working to be able to find a job that can support your family? On top of that, how do we look at, you know, providing some dignity to these workers with some actual paid time off? So appreciate the engagement to date. We're hopeful that we can continue working with members of this committee to be able to find a solution that we can bring before council, and really address the livelihood of these, you know, 13,500 workers or more within the fast food sector. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Lucila. I'm here with Silicon Valley Rising. And first of all, I also wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Cohen and Vice Mayor Kame for listening to the stories of the fast food workers and putting the issues that they have, you know, at the top of your priority. I'm also here in solidarity. San Jose is home to the second largest number of fast food workers, over 13,000. Most of them are immigrants, women of color, who really need your support. They're experiencing abuses, not just from management, but also from customers and from other coworkers as well. So we really need to take action on that. You know, when we talk about, you know, making sure that the city is prosperous and successful, putting low wage workers and those who are most disadvantaged at the center is the heart of what city council, you know, is supposed to be doing, and I hope that you will take the right action to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ruth and Ramses, please.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. My name is Ramses Teo Nichols. I am from SEIU Local 1021, where I serve as Vice President of Politics. I'm also a proud resident of Northeast Willow Glen, Union Household, and we are here, as you can see, that dozens of folks behind me from fast food industry here in San Jose, making the case to you about the importance of passing an ordinance to support them. We in our union are part of a large Northern California public service sector union where we work with a lot of folks. We are very much tied to the local government, counties and cities, nonprofit workers, also education. And going back to a decade ago, the folks you see behind me are the folks who inspired us to move the minimum wage campaigns, right? As you can, as you, as you have seen over the years, minimum wages have gone up all over the country because of the, because of the inspiration we got from them organizing to improve their wages. I think now, because of the pandemic, because of so many factors that have changed in the food industry, it's so dependent on fast food and fast food workers, we owe it to them to improve things now on the safety side, on the ability for them to address issues day to day, their work schedules, everything that we can possibly do for them, we owe it to them to do this. So in the spirit of unions, where we constantly do this at our workplace to improve things, we wanna, we wanna come here and, and basically ask you, the way our farm workers used to ask, right? ¿Se puede? And yes, the answer we are looking for is that sí, se puede, right? And San Jose should move this forward, make things better. Please, please, just know that we are continuously inspired by these folks behind me, and we are gonna continue to back them all the way until things continue to get better for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Silverthob?
Good afternoon. I supervise the workers' rights practice at the Alexander Community Law Center, and I also supervise the legal advice line through the county, and I'm on the English line. And I do trainings regularly for fast food workers. So everything that these workers have said, I hear over and over. I would say that this industry is among the worst in terms of abuses and violations, and the stories that I hear are really hair-raising. Raw sewage, workers attacked, wage theft that's rampant, retaliation, and because of their unpredictable schedules and the fact that there are so many abuses that go unremedied, I think this legislation is, is very necessary. I also find that in the trainings I do, which is just a small fraction of the workers, workers are not aware of their rights. And you have heard from one worker today who talked about what a difference it makes to know your rights. So we're asking council members to support efforts by fast food workers to ensure that they know their rights, that they're safe and protected, and also that there's some stability to their working hours. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the final speaker, and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming out. I also wanna thank our great translator for being here with us today. And we, this was our last Rules and Open Government Committee meeting of the year 2023, so we will see you all in January.
There's a rule scheduled on the 13th.
There is?
Oh, I thought there wasn't.
We just-
I was told that was canceled. Did we not make the cancellation?
I can ask about that.
Okay.
I moved to cancel.
I mean, we can-
Just move, just move to cancel.
Yeah.
I moved to cancel the December 13.
Second.
Committee.
All right, I think we're gonna take a vote on canceling the meeting on the 13th. So let's vote on that.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kame?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye. And sorry for the confusion, but this is our last Rules and Open Government Committee meeting of the year 2023. We will see you in the new year. Enjoy the holidays, everyone. We're adjourned at 2:37 PM.